Okay, good evening. Today is January 25th. This is the board meeting of the Hyde Park Central School District. At this time, may I have a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel and financial balance, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Thank you. We're now in the executive session. Okay. Thank you very much for slight delay here as we're getting organized. I'm gonna, due to the fact that we learned new procedure, we don't have to vote to come back into open session, so at this time, we'll have the pleasure of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the rule for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Okay. Thank you. There are no agenda items, changes, additions, but depending on how long certain discussions go, we may move some of the discussion in later in the agenda to the next board meeting. We'll just see, just so we don't hear all night. Okay. May I have a motion to adopt tonight's agenda, please?
So moved. Second.
You got that? You got Perry and Dan. Any discussion on that? All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. Upcoming events, there's only one. That will be the next board meeting of the Board of Education will be at North Park Elementary. That's Thursday, February the 8th at 7:00 PM. And that brings us to pride. You got the...
All right. Not much this week because we haven't had school. But last Thursday, we had a wonderful concert at FDR, our Prisms concert. And on Saturday, Sarah Trainer ran a 10:41 two-mile to take the fastest time in New York State and the second fastest in the US.
Excellent.
Thank you, Leah. A couple of other items. A big shout out to the Hyde Park Historical Society. An annual event, an annual gift that they give to the school district is they collect mittens, hats, and gloves. Beautiful, a lot of them handmade, some of them store-bought. And they drop off a tremendous amount of hats, mittens, and gloves to all our nurses' office for all our students. And if you're a parent, you know how many pairs of mittens, gloves, so it's nice to get a free gift, and they're beautiful. So thank you to Patsy Costello who organizes this. She sent us some photos. We're getting them up on our website if they're not already there. The Katie Filiberty Invitational happened. This is the first one I missed, but I was there in spirit. By all accounts, it was the best one. It was set up professionally with screens and dynamite event. We had 11 school districts represented, 113 gymnasts, and they are up to $3,100 of money that they raised through that invitational for the Katie Filiberty Memorial Fund. Prior to this board meeting, I had the opportunity to stop in at the gymnastics meet, which would not be notable, except I was sitting next to our football coach, Coach Morocco, who excused himself right at the start of the gymnastics meet. And I thought, wow, and his daughter's on the team. And I thought, well, where's he going? And the coach came over and got him. He sang the National Anthem a cappella, and it was absolutely amazing and a surprise. So we've gotta try and convince him to do that for one of the football games. But it was just beautiful, so, but he did it at a gymnastics meet. Aviva has some information on the art awards?
Yeah. We have 14 scholastic art competition winners this year. Some students won more than one award. Josh Breezy is working on getting the students together for a photo for the FDR webpage and Facebook page. They also receive certificates. Our regional awards ceremony is at SUNY New Paltz on February 2nd, and I'm gonna read the winners. Gold medal winners are Michelle Aravalo, Genevieve Faucher, Tad O'Halloran had two gold medals, Eden Palmer, two gold medals, Justine Chapinski, and Tian Bo got two gold medals. And then silver medal winners are Emily Baker, Thomas Colomari had two, Naisha Shoudri, two, Diamond Eubanks, Stephen Lenoski, five silver medals, Tad O'Halloran, three additional silver medals, Emily Outwater, two silver medals, and Eden Palmer, another for silver, and Alana Tobias, silver medal. Also, another piece of pride from music is we are hosting the All County Junior High Concert at FDR. So they're rehearsing Friday, and then Saturday performance at 2:00.
No, 2:00 and 3:30.
2:30.
Yeah. Okay. You got anything else?
I'd like to say a few things about the Prism concert. As you all are sure are aware of, I just think the music program at FDR is, and our whole district is fabulous. And the Prism concert only happens every two years. It's a showcase for all of our students in the high school to perform. It's an unbelievable event. It never stops. You go from one group to another, they set up while they're each performing. And it's just unbelievably overwhelming to see the talent and see the accomplishments of all of the students in our high school. And I really recommend that anybody, everybody go to it, especially with younger kids. It's a great way to inspire our younger students to show them what they can achieve once they get to that level. So I think it's fabulous, and I'm always overwhelmed, so I encourage everybody to go. In two years, they'll have the Prism concert again.
It was very, very well done. I like the fact that it moved. Nobody left, which was another nice thing, because everybody was interested in seeing what's coming next. So there was also another concert. North Park Elementary had their concert this past Tuesday. It was also well-done. And as Annie said, you know, people should go and see what these kids do. They're so proud of their accomplishment, and it doesn't even matter what the music sounds like, although it was good. It's just a very positive thing for a school district, so, thank you. Is there anybody else has any other pride? Okay. Superintendent's report.
Yeah. One, just an announcement. The Snowflake Gala is on February 9th. This is the Claudio Cares Foundation, and similar to the Katie Filiberty Foundation, all of the proceeds go to scholarship funds and back to the students. So if anybody was interested, that is February 9th, and just an opportunity to thank the Claudio Cares Foundation for all their donations to our school district and the scholarships. And then at our last meeting, we had a concern raised about Havland Middle School, and so Aviva and Eric have put a few things together.
Okay. And I'll say that Eric Shaw really put together a tremendous amount of material on everything they do proactively and also to respond to any issues that may happen at Havland. And I just put together, took some highlights from that, just some pieces that would make sense to share here. But I will say now that he sends out a newsletter regularly, and he's gonna include a lot more information in the newsletter that's going out next week, so that'll be for all parents at Havland. So at times when students' behaviors happen that are counter to the expectations in the Code of Conduct, as a school community, they work together, providing resources, information, interventions for students, families, faculty, and staff. They've seen a pattern of new behavior as a result of social media use at such a young age, and they've provided a lot of information for students and families about the dangers and risks and detrimental effects of the new phenomenon on middle school students. And I just have a list of some of the things that are in place. So there's, of course, the Code of Conduct that is followed at Havland, well documented. They follow progressive discipline. The Dignity for All Students Act. I want to take this opportunity to say what the process is. Of course, it's in policy, but for people to hear in very plain language that if you have a concern about your child being bullied, or if a child does, you can bring that complaint to anyone at Havland. But if you have a formal complaint, a real concern, it should be in writing to the building principal. He's the Dignity Act Coordinator at the building. That gets investigated. You get a response in writing after the investigation is concluded, that it's founded or not founded. You have the opportunity to meet with the building staff to talk about how your child can feel safe in school, ongoing, you know, what the plan is. And then if you are unhappy with the results of that investigation, you can appeal to me in writing, because I'm the Dignity Act Coordinator at the district level. So that's how that works. Right now, there are no open complaints at Havland for bullying, and I have not received an appeal this year from any of our buildings. So I wanted to, you know, give that information here. They have implemented PBIS, and their school-wide statement is "Rise Above, Respect, Inspire, Be Safe, and Excel." PBS stands for Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports. Havland was the first adopter of PBIS in our district and has the most fully-developed program. We also have the program at FDR. I think we're in our third year there. We have a CAPE counselor. CAPE stands for Council on Addiction Prevention Education. We have a substance abuse counselor who spends half the time at FDR and half the time at Havland, and she counsels students on a regular basis, and there are a lot of activities that go with that. There's a new ally club for students. PBIS team tracks discipline incidents and looks at root causes per grade, school-wide. And currently, Havland is not experiencing a spike in challenging behaviors, but last spring, they did. And at that time, the building leadership team designed and implemented new building-wide practices, which resulted in redesigned hallway behaviors, expectations, new procedures for classroom revival, and cafeteria transitions back to class. And we're now seeing a much more normal rate of incidents. And I'll say just my own personal experiences. I'm at Havland at least once a month, usually twice, for over an hour, and I have, you know, yet to experience an incident happening in my presence when I was there. The building leadership team has continued to center on climate and culture this year and last year. There have been assemblies on bullying prevention and respect, character education. There are Chromebook-free lunchtimes to improve students' pro-social communication skills, you know, because they have Chromebooks, you know, the rest of the day. We want them to have some time to interact with each other. There are many different community in-house resources offered in a workshop format during community nights the last four years. There are training and programs provided on diversity, culturally responsive practice, and really comprehensive structures in place for identifying and supporting students who are at risk and students who are having a difficulty socially and emotionally. And there's, again, more detail. We'll go out to parents. Certainly, that information is available at Havland as well. And I had to reduce this list for you greatly because there are so many proactive and responsive programs, procedures, and interventions at Havland. So, you know, I didn't want to go into more detail here. I mean, certainly if there are questions that happen later on.
Right. And Eric is here tonight and plans to do more of an awareness campaign and share that information. Also, you know, when people bring concerns here, we do meet with them. There was follow-up, and there always will be follow-up. Typically, the follow-up happens at the, any concern should be brought to the building. Please come in, meet with us, meet with the building principals, meet with the staff, and certainly meet with us. We have never turned anyone away that wants to meet with us, ever.
Okay. Is that it? Okay. Moving on to the capital project finance options.
Yes. I'll have Linda introduce this topic and come up to the podium for a minute.
Okay. So Jason is here from our financial advisors, Bernie Donegan's office, to go over the capital project financing, but he also brought a gift with him for us, so I can meet you at the podium.
So we just have a little memento for you from the recent refunding transaction. Just a little frame that you can hang up in the boardroom or somewhere in the district if you'd like. It shows the cover page from the refunding, as well as the highlights as far as the savings. Again, it's a little over $300,000, so it's, you know, great savings for the district, something you're obviously very proud of, so we wanted to just do a little something as part of that transaction for you. And this may become a collector's edition, because, you know, I don't know if you've been following along with the tax reform law, but advanced refundings are no longer allowed thanks to the lovely changes in Washington. So there won't be many more of these coming forward. Now you'll be a little bit more restricted in the ability to do it.
You're saying we're not rich enough? We're not rich enough for that kind of a...
Right. So, but, so yeah, that was just a little side kind of follow-up from some of the past times we've been here. We thought we'd bring that for you tonight.
Okay. Thank you.
Is the presentation ready? Just go from here? Do you have to do anything? So, thank you for having us again tonight. Just a reminder for everybody, I know I was here not too long ago, so probably most of you recognize me, but I'm Jason Schwartz from Bernard Donning Incorporated, where the financial advisor for the district and have been for a number of years. And we were asked to come tonight to provide kind of a range of options for the proposed capital project that you're looking at potentially coming up this May of 2018. So we have a little bit of a report for you tonight. It'll kind of follow the format we've had in the past. It's a little bit, we kind of condensed some of the assumption pages, just because there's a lot here, because we have four options. But, so I'll just kind of go through at a high level what we have, and then, you know, feel free to stop me at any point, or if you have any questions later on that you want to run through. And then I know, kind of at the end, after we go through the four options, part of the discussion tonight was gonna be just an idea of, you know, the pros and cons of voting a project they want versus phasing or things like that, so I can provide a little bit of insight on that, too, if you'd like. So to start, just a couple of background things that we get into, because a few of these scenarios will have some minor impact on taxes potentially if they were chosen. So we did want to just include real quick, kind of a history of where you've been at for the past couple of years in terms of your assessed valuations, because that obviously plays into tax rates. So we just kind of give a little bit of a background on the five towns that you have within the district. You can see on this page, basically, look at the five-year historical change. You see, if you look back really over the last five years, it's been pretty flat. So, you know, in general terms, seems to be a timer on this on me. Talk faster. In general terms, you know, assessed values tend to grow over time, but to be conservative, since they've been flat over the last five years, we basically are assuming going on into the future, you can see that there would be no growth for the next 15 years for the term of the project. So obviously, that's, you know, probably about the most conservative projection you can make. You typically wouldn't expect, you know, a significant decline in assessed value over time. So that kind of sets the stage when we get to the discussion on tax impact for some of the scenarios a little bit further down. And then just as a recap, I know we've kind of hit on this before, but we threw in there the summary of your existing debt service. And again, at least on the building side, this is all pretty much locked in at this point, because you had the $3 million authorization, went to bonds this past spring. The refunding is already reflected in this, so that's certainly, you know, this is a pretty stable picture of where you're at in terms of the building side. And you can see we're kind of building at that. This is building in buses in general. I mean, you can see in column F there, which is the second-to-last column from the right, we've traditionally been local share-wise at around that $1.5 million level, so that's where we're trying to, anytime we talk about, you know, building a project in with no increase, that's kind of where we're at, that we're trying to build back to that level. And just real quick, kind of showing you graphically where that is, and you can see that drop-off coming up there, I'm sorry, in a few years that we're kind of talking about, that this, you know, May of 2018 vote could kind of slide in and fill that drop-off. So option one that we have for you here, you know, there's a couple of different assumptions in here. In the first three scenarios, in terms of the timeline are all the same. So I'll just kind of run through on this first scenario, and then on the subsequent scenarios, we can just talk about really the differences in terms of project costs and funding sources. So in this first scenario, or really in all these scenarios, we're assuming a vote in May of 2018. And then really, we leave about a year worth of time for design and approval. So, you know, Keith, you need to remember with capital projects, anytime we talk about these, is if you vote it this May, it doesn't mean you're doing work this summer, right? There's a long process with SED, and they're trying to do some things to alleviate it, but, you know, really, we have to assume at least about a year. So you're really talking about potentially not having any work in borrowings until the 2019 school year, hopefully wrapping up in the 2020 school year, and then closing the project out there. We've also included, we factored in your building aid ratio at 61.9%. We've also assumed a 95% bond percentage. So again, what that is, is we're saying, you know, out of all the total project costs, we're assuming only 95% would be eligible for aid. So obviously, you're still kind of defining your scope a little bit, so these numbers could tweak a little bit if anything happens to make its way into the scope that would be, you know, non-aidable. But I think, really, with what you're talking about, most things are aidable and within your aid ceiling, so 95 is a nice conservative estimate in terms of leaving you a little cushion if anything gets kicked out, but hopefully on the conservative side. So that's kind of the timeline we're talking about in terms of the project. And then scenario one, in terms of what are we talking about for a project? We're talking about a $19.7 million project. And in column B at the top, you can see that in this scenario, we're basically using almost $2 million in capital reserves, so $1,009,000 was the assumption in this first scenario. And basically, once we kind of run out the schedule, you can see that there's a local share in the far-right column there, but once we lay that back into this original chart that we had earlier in the report, so on the left-half side of the page is all the existing debt service that matches up to that original page we had. And then columns E through H are specifically what relates to this proposed project, and then we combine it all in the gray shaded column to the far right to put it all back together and say, what would it look like with this proposed project? And then the easiest way to see that is on the graphical timeline again. So you can see in this first scenario, $19.7 million project, there's essentially, you know, negligible impact to the tax rate, you know, very minimal for those first three years. It's about $124,000 in total over three years. So, you know, we could run out the numbers to quantify what that is, but it would be, you know, relatively minor in terms of any impact, and the district also potentially could offset it with debt service funds, since it's a relatively small number. So you're barely kind of peeking over in this scenario, so it's essentially almost a no-increase project. And then you can see, I know, you know, one of the other discussions that's been had is, you know, future planning after this May of 18 vote, so you can see that would still leave a drop-off in the 2021 year, I believe it is. So, you know, about two or three years out, you might be ready for another vote potentially if there's further needs in the district. I guess I can stop there real quick and see if you have any questions.
Yeah.
Oh, I just wanted to say that we did look at this scenario at the last meeting, and I had calculated that the, if we didn't use debt service fund to set off the overage, it would be about $6 a year per household was the average.
So am I reading...
To go over the debt service level.
So just, am I looking at this correctly to say that in this graph, basically the first, what year, this is really gonna hit in 2020? Is that what, the green is the proposed?
Right. Yep. So fiscally, you're ending 2020.
Right. So that's basically gonna bring us just slightly above what our current debt load is. Next year, it almost seems flat, and then it's a little bump up the following year.
Right.
Right. Okay. One other question I had about timeline. If this project, so you're saying a year for design and approval. If that were to be extended, does it basically just push these, push these out a little bit? I mean, what's the impact if, you know, for six months, take six months longer for, before we get, the whole project gets delayed six months through SED or design or anything else?
Yeah. I mean, it can vary a little depending, like, you'd have options, right? Because it kind of depends on the scope of work, what's the timeline that it can be done? Is it all exclusively summer work? Or can some of it be done during the school year? But in general terms, it's probably safe to assume that if, you know, if there was a delay of six months to a year, that everything would roughly just slide out a year, because really, we could hold off on any borrowings, since you had the reserve money to kind of, you know, be your seed money, so to speak, for any upfront incidental costs, so we can kind of delay on borrowings to match up with the delayed aid, since the aid is driven by your SED approval date. So really, if there's delays, then everything can slide out in, you know, on the same timeline and just kind of slide out another year.
Thank you.
Okay. So scenario two, we looked at, again, this is all the same assumptions in terms of timeline, but in terms of total dollars, it would be, you know, roughly $25 million, just a little bit over 25 for the total project cost. And in this scenario, since you're doing a slightly larger project, we said, okay, out of the $7 million reserves that the district has, instead of using roughly $2 million, we're gonna say we'll kick in $4 million of reserves. So we're gonna use a little bit more reserves to help offset the impact of that project. So in this scenario, you can see, once we filter it back into the summary page, now when we get out to the combined bar chart, you see those bars are a little bit higher up in those three years. Again, it's just for three years, and then it's gonna drop down back below the line after that, but for those three years, it's a little bit higher, so we took the next step of saying, in this scenario, what would that cost be? So we did what we call our house page, and this basically said, we gave a range of a couple of different house values, but the one we kind of keyed in on a circle was $200,000 house with a star exemption. Those three years that you're above the line would average out at about $13 a year increase in taxes as a result of the project. Then after those three years, you kind of drop back down, so it would be just for that three-year window that you would have that increase in the taxes. And then scenario three, along the same line of thinking, we, again, same timeline as far as construction, but in this scenario, we said, what about, it was basically almost $33.5 million project. And again, since we were a little bit larger on the project size, we grabbed a little bit more of the reserve in this scenario and said, what if we use $5 million of capital reserve? So when we layer that back in on the existing debt, now you can see we're getting a little bit higher those first three years, and even a year beyond that, where we originally were gonna have the drop-off for the next project, is now getting eaten up in terms of this project that's coming on. So in terms of an impact for the homeowners, those four years that are above the bar are $26 on average for a $200,000 house with a star exemption. And then really, now you're also talking about for future planning needs, that that drop-off is gonna be pushed out for, to kind of like the next drop-off that's another three or four years out, so that could impact, you know, potential future planning needs without having an increase to the tax levy. So scenario four, this is where we kind of diverge in terms of assumptions. So scenario four, one of the things we were asked to look at was, what about if we voted a large project but kind of phased it in? So instead of doing a vote now and then another vote in two or three years, what if we just do a large vote right now and then kind of phase it in over, you know, a five-year span or something like that? So again, in the phase one, all the timeline is exactly the same as it was in the previous three scenarios. But phase two, we've essentially said, we're gonna delay, kind of sit on the design of that one to get closer to that drop-off, so we'll wait. So we'll wait until, you know, about an extra two years to do the submittals to the state, get SED approval in spring of 2021. So you'll really be looking at like summer of '21 and summer of '22 for the construction of that phase two. In terms of the actual cost of the project, similar to scenario three, we're again looking at around a $34 million project in this scenario and $5 million reserves. So once we add that in, get back to this bar chart again. So you can see, you know, in terms of the impact on the bar chart, we now, by phasing it, we've eliminated some of those original years where we're over the bar. We're still having a little bit of overage just because of the timing of it. And again, you can see in terms of future planning needs, we've now kind of pushed any future projects further out where the drop offs are. And in terms of what you're looking at over those bars, it's, you know, kind of like a two-year period that on average would be about $24 over before you kind of fall back down to roughly in line with where you've been in the past.
Do we, is it, do you, do we want to stop the timer on the slides rolling through?
I don't know how to do it. I think when I click back, it seems like it stops.
Okay. If not, we can ask Roger for help.
So, you know, as far as just the rest of the back end of the report, we also put in just the building aid ratio chart for your reference and the maximum cost allowance. So again, when we talk about 95% bond percentage, we're assuming that all the costs are within your maximum cost allowance realistically. So the larger the project gets, the more we would just want to be cognizant of making sure that it's kind of fitting properly into these aid ceilings and not going over, else that could impact the picture as well. But in general terms, your aid ceilings are pretty healthy, large numbers, so there's probably not too much you need to worry about in that regard. So, I mean, I guess I'll stop there, and I can throw it open to general questions, or if you wanted me to, I can talk a little bit on the idea that the pros and cons of phasing versus separate votes or...
I would like to hear that first before we start discussing.
Okay. So, you know, in terms of like scenario four, where we're talking about, what if we vote one large project and kind of phase it in? I mean, there certainly can be some benefits to that. I mean, you know, one potential benefit is you're only going to vote once, right, versus having to go to vote twice. And then as far as if, you know, if you determine that that's really the size of your needs right now, is that, you know, $33, $34 million project, by phasing it, what we looked at in scenario four versus just voting it all and going all at once, which would be scenario three, you see that tax impact is, you know, a little bit shorter timeframe and kind of pushed out. So it kind of, you know, alleviates some of the impact to the taxpayers by phasing it in and trying to grab a little bit of that future drop off against the, you know, quote unquote, phase two. But on the downside, you know, there's a couple of downsides in terms of phasing. You know, first of all, when we run these reports, obviously, we're being, you know, fairly conservative. We're trying to protect you and say, give you like a worst-case scenario, so to speak. So when we look at phasing something, it's almost kind of, if you think about it, it's almost kind of like doubly conservative, right? Because we're building in the phase one, which has got assumptions in it, and then we're building in phase two on top of phase one, versus if we broke those out as two separate votes, by the time we got to a vote on phase two as a separate vote, that phase one work would now be known. So if it turns out better than our conservative assumptions, it may eliminate the need to have a tax impact, or it may at least reduce that or allow you to do a larger project without a tax impact. So as you start to get a little bit of the, you know, pieces more known, then it buys you a little bit more flexibility in terms of the future project planning. Another potential benefit of kind of bifurcating the votes, if you want to think about it, is that, is in terms of revenue sources, so when we talk about the capital reserves, you have to have whatever you're going to put into the project, at least in terms of what you're going to portray to the public, in hand on the day of the vote, right? So that, so you can only utilize what you have today. If you wait two years to vote, that gives you two more years to potentially come up with additional revenues to help offset the phase two of the project. So it could buy you more time in terms of, you know, getting additional revenues to try to, you know, basically, it's like if you're trying to buy a house and you're saving money, waiting two years gets you a little bit more time to have more of a down payment.
One of the things we talked about collectively, together with Linda and Elliot and the team here, and Jason, is phasing takes you into a little bit of an unknown, or you're trying to predict the future. And our next building condition survey is 2020. And while we know all of this work needs to be done now, if we contain something in two votes, we can vote now on the project at hand, and then in a couple of years, our thinking might be different about what's the highest priority. And, but if you start this four-year-long process of phasing in, you may, we could potentially find ourselves with a capital project that's still in the works and promised and might need to go out for something else that is more eminent at two years from now, three years from now. The other thing that we talked about is that the phasing really makes sense, if you will, for the larger project, option three, but that also wipes out a good portion of our capital project, our capital reserve fund. And we know that we can't do all of the work, or all of the work that needs to be done in the district right now. And having more of a capital reserve is some assurance that should something occur that we have to attend to now, we have to ask permission to use the money, but it's there. But that that third scenario really cuts us close on the reserves.
I think, and that's a great point Greer just made in terms of, you know, the one, you know, another thing to think about with the phasing and voting it all right now, is you're identifying, so if you're saying, we know we have, you know, $34 million of project over the next five years, and we're trying to decide if we vote it all now, or do we vote 19 now and 15 in a few years? If you're voting it all right now, you need to say what that scope is. And today, you may think that something's a pretty high priority for that phase two, but come two years down the road, things may have changed, and maybe you have different ideas of what is a higher priority item. Well, you've already gone to the voters and said what your scope is, so it'd be pretty difficult to switch midstream in terms of, you know, there is an overall, sorry, an overall resolution that goes to the voters, and there can be some flexibility in that, but it also can be somewhat restrictive to your needs. So you can almost handcuff yourself if you vote now, but wait a few years to do the work.
Couple of questions. What's the total of the reserve funds that we have?
Seven million.
Seven million, okay. You know, and I just had a couple of thoughts, and I'm not saying I'm pro one way or the other, but I think the scope of work that we're talking about, the difference between $19 million and beyond that, to me, isn't a lot of discretionary decision-making, you know, as to whether this needs to be done or not. We're talking about core infrastructure in our buildings.
Correct.
We're not talking about putting on, you know, painting walls and making things look pretty. We're talking about keeping the heat on, so, and keeping ventilation in the building. So I hear what you're saying, that things could change. And I know that, you know, you guys do a great job of writing the referendums so that there's enough flexibility that we can, you know, it's have the flexibility necessary to meet where we're going.
Right, the referendums are usually pretty broad for, you know, the scope of work within the work, right? But if you're only looking at, the key thing that we see people get tripped upon sometimes is if you're, if the original project only has, you know, you're only touching three buildings, let's say, and then, and now all of a sudden, you want to go touch a fourth building, that's where you can get tied up, that if that building wasn't in the referendum, you may not be able to touch that building without going back to the building.
Which I would envision that if we were to do a larger project that becomes phased, every building is going to be identified
Right, so maybe okay.
In that referendum, which actually might play in our favor, because it would give us the flexibility that if something came up, we'd have the ability to react to it, even through the design phase, to say that, you know, we were going to do something sooner rather than later.
Did you want to spend a couple of minutes just talking about what the scope is?
Yeah, yeah.
I was going to ask for that, eventually.
Yeah. So the 19.7 that was already discussed is what we went through last time in terms of what's been recommended by the DLT as well. So just as a recap, that's FDR in terms of the science pods, and also the mechanical work related to the science pods. Havelin Science and Havelin Mechanical Work and North Park Mechanical, okay? So the 25 in option two, 25, right? 25 in option two that we're talking about gets us all of the FDR mechanical work done on top of what I just described, okay? Makes sense? And then the next, the entire $33.5 million gets all of the mechanical work done for all of the schools. So that's how we, that's how we package this. We left last time kind of with that direction from you to take a look at each one of those. So that's how we arrived at those different options. In all of them, FDR, we left with the direction last time. FDR Science is the design option two that you saw last time. And we have that here with us tonight, if you want to go through it again. But we had presented multiple options, and everybody landed on option two as being the preferred option. So that's how we've moved forward in all of these financial scenarios. One thing we just, we talked about as a team also, just want to bring up, we have some concerns about in option three, less so if you phase it, but in option three, if you look to get all of the mechanical work done in all of the buildings, we've got concern about being in all those buildings at the same time. We think it's basically, we're going to recommend strongly against it. It's not something that you want to do to take on that much construction in every building at one time, disrupting summer programs. A lot of this work would be done during the summer. The other thing we're concerned about is the availability of contractors that could take on that much work. We also know, I know from my work primarily in the capital region also, there's a lot of work bidding on schools this summer. And we're very concerned throughout the next couple of years that the pool of available contractors that could take on a project of that size would be very, very small. So it impacts your, potentially impacts your bid results and availability of strong bidders. All things we just want to share with you, so we're considering all of these as we go forward, but...
Can I ask just one question on the 25 million?
Sure.
One, there was an additional page that had like lockers and some other things. Are those included in that number?
That's a no. Lou's shaking his head no.
Right. Lockers, two things on lockers. One, Jay and Aviva both sent me, there's an article out that just came out about, you know, the end of lockers, but we're not ready to make that snap decision based on one article that came out and said lockers are a thing of the past. But Linda and I discussed, lockers could be taken care of within our general budget. So that's one. One of the other items was modular...
Curtain wall.
The curtain wall.
Curtain wall, right, right.
And modular classrooms during construction. And again, you know, once we narrow down the scope of the project, all of our numbers right now are draft. So once we nail down which project it is, and then do we include curtain wall, the modular classroom, and the temporary office, we can start to really put some ink on the paper, if you will.
Yeah, that's important to emphasize. We were really trying to give you financial scenarios tonight based on ranges. So it's important that if we get direction, whatever direction we get from you tonight, we need to go back and hone those numbers and spend a little bit more time. They shouldn't change drastically, but we'd want to make sure, especially on the modular and the temporary space, that that's covered, to make sure you're covering the phasing of construction properly.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, sure.
Just based on what you were saying about getting the work done, I'm not sure I understand what you were saying exactly. So you were saying that if we went with a scenario three, where we were doing all this work in all the schools, you were talking about getting it all done all at once. But why would that, why would that be that way? Why couldn't we do FDR, then move to the next school and do Havelin, and then move to the, I don't know what order, I'm not, gosh, I'm not committing to that. I'm just, you know, why wouldn't we just start here and get it all done, and start here and get it all done? Why would we need, why would we need multiple contractors? Why couldn't we have one to move along?
Aid's not going to start.
Yeah, you want to, it's the flow of aid. So you want to be able to get projects started and then closed out, so that the aid will start to flow. And that aid, they changed this a few years ago, where the state aid will not start to flow until the project's completely closed out, which means you end up with a number of open contracts at the same time to get that completed.
So what that means is that when you start a project, they give you 18 months to get, I think 18 months is, yeah, they give you 18 months to get, from the time you start to the time you finish the project.
Okay.
So that then you send in all your financial information to SED, so that they can start reimbursing us for the payments that we're making for getting aid for the project. So when you do a larger project, like the way it's shown in number three, you've got a much bigger project, and if you stretch it out, you're going to be, it's like, it's like spending all your money before anybody starts reimbursing you.
Okay.
So that's one of the advantages of phasing, is that you can, you can phase the project, so you can do a lump of it, close it out with SED, your funds start coming back from SED, and then you're going on to your next phase. But you've got, you've already got a cash flow, you're getting reimbursed for the first phase.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, I guess I would like to know, my opinion, option three, from what I've heard, doesn't sound good. But I'd like to know what the view of the board is on a phased project as opposed to a...
I think your question's premature. I don't think we've had a chance to ask questions about this.
Well, I'd just like to get an idea if you want to phase up it, but that's fine. Ask your question then.
So one of the things that I noticed in the graphs is that the bus debt financing is not projected forward. So it gives the illusion that our debt burden falls off more quickly than it will. And I'm not accusing you of trying to influence us by not giving us full information, but it almost makes me believe, without looking more closely, that we're going to have extra funds sometime in the, you know, 2030, 2027 range, just looking at the height of the bar graph relative to the dotted line.
Right, so we can, you know, if you want at some point, we traditionally have only shown the five years, because that's the cycle of what a bus gets paid back over. It's a five-year aid payback, a five-year bond payback. So usually, we've gone out about that far. I mean, if it would be helpful, we can certainly layer in more buses all the way out beyond, but it's, you know, I guess the key thing to note is that where the buses fall off is beyond kind of the timeframe for this first vote, right? So it would more impact future planning down the road.
I understand that, but we're, we put up a proposal for bonds every year, or for buses every year, and so I wouldn't anticipate that number to change dramatically relative to where it's been for the last four or five years. So where I'm going is that for the bars beyond 2024, the red part should remain roughly at the same height as it is for 2023. And where that leads me is that we're not going to have a lot of overhead in scenario four for another capital project, if we're going to maintain our debt level at the same place.
Right, yeah, and I didn't get into the specific years, so I apologize, but I kind of tried to hit on it a little bit. But so that the key thing is, you know, if you go in scenarios one and two, so kind of skirting back a little bit here. So in scenario one, you can see, it obviously looks like it's dropping off further as those red bars fall off. But really, the key one to focus in on is that it's 2023, that first one after the dash line, is kind of like the last full year of buses. And if you built the buses back in, you'd still be like right at that bar, so you'd still be under. So you have room on that one. And again, on scenario two, you would be a little closer to your current debt load, but you'd still be under going out beyond those years. So I think... So I think it was, I think when you add in the buses, because I kind of roughed it out real quick, it equates to about a hundred twenty-five thousand of local share that you could build in in a future project in scenario one and ninety thousand in scenario two. And in both those cases, you'd be looking at a vote maybe like December nineteen, May of twenty that would fill in that bar. So that's kind of what you'd be talking about. In scenarios three and four, when you fill it in, if you lay the, layer the buses back in, you know, maybe I kind of glossed over this too quickly, so I apologize. But you'd be, you know, as you'd see, you'd kind of still be at, above that bar for a little ways out until I believe it's twenty twenty-seven would be where you would kind of get some relief finally. So that'd be like a vote in maybe the, you know, three or four years further out. So you're talking twenty-two or twenty-three for a vote to fill that in. And you're only filling in about forty thousand local share.
Yeah, so what, in effect, what we're doing if we vote to spend more money now is delaying the next capital project if our long-term goal is to keep the same level of local share.
Right, unless you can fully fund a future project, the local share component of a future project with the capital reserve or some other contributions. So which, you know, if you think about it, it kind of makes sense where you're saying, you know, if you took thirty-four million of needs and kind of parse it up, in scenarios one and two, there's still going to be a drop-off in the future to kind of grab some of that money. Whereas in scenarios three and four, you're saying we're just going to, we're voting it all right now and then we just have to figure out how we're going to parcel it out. Are we just going to kind of have a little bit larger impact for the first couple of years but get all the work done now? Or are we going to phase the work and kind of level out that impact a little bit more? But then, you know, either way, you're, you're kind of taking that future vote that's, you know, two, three years out and pulling it up into this vote and then pushing yourself out to the, to the next one, which, you know, which again in scenarios one and two, where you have that vote coming out in two, three years, then you also would still have that future drop-off of around forty thousand another three or four years after that.
Yeah, but, so to oversimplify this to help me make decisions, it appears as, as if we really only have thirty-five million dollars to spend. And I say that because it looks like whatever part of that we don't spend now, we'll be able to allocate in a capital project at some point down the road. Worrying about the payment schedule, if you will, to maintain a level local share and therefore a low level tax burden is something that we can schedule around. But it still only looks like we've got thirty-five million dollars to play with.
If you're, right, if the goal is to more or less stay at the existing debt load and if we're only using up to five million reserves. So there are a number of variables out there as far as other things that could be looked at, you know, whether it's part of this project or if there's more needs that pop up down the road. But this is kind of meant to at least give you kind of a range of options and give you an idea of what some of the different impacts could be.
Sure. So this brings me back around to our last building condition survey where I believe that we've got more than just what's on the schedule to be repaired.
Much more.
You know, roofs, for example.
Right, right.
So whatever we spend now, we can't spend later to fix those other, those other items.
Right.
Exactly.
Yeah, the hard reality is we need to do a lot more work than we've got the money to do.
Right, and from, for, from our perspective and our collective thinking, the revote, not revote, voting again in a few years when we have more information and can reprioritize gives us more flexibility in how we continue to maintain our buildings. I, I think Perry, you said it best a couple of meetings ago that, you know, we're going to need to co, we're going to need to keep our debt service in mind and keep our eye on that, but we're always going to have work to do. We have seven buildings, eight if you count this, nine if you count the transportation. We, we're always going to have work to do. And I think we just want to chunk it out in a way that's manageable from the financial side, from the construction management side, from the design aspect. And again, you know, that, that, we're trying to present to the voters something that's manageable and fiscally responsible, gives us some security if in two years we need to put on the May ballot, the roofs. We have some reserves. So we're really not thinking, our collective thinking is not the whole gamut right now. That's our, our recommendation and the district leadership team as well.
Yeah, you know, I.
It was nice, I think it's great to look at. It was, no, nothing lost by looking at it and knowing the answers to these scenarios.
I, I, I'm going to say something that, that probably is going to, may shock most people that out in the TV world perhaps, but again, the, the way that the referendum will be worded, I think in, in my limited exposure that the referendum verbiage for doing the HVAC, it's going to, it's going to be listed as renovations to buildings. And it may, I would expect it would be broad enough that if there was a need to do roofing, that that referendum is going to be broad enough that would allow you to do roofing if you need to do roofing in the second phase. It may not allow you, and we're not planning on building a new building or, or adding on, which generally becomes a site work question and, and that usually has to be identified a little differently. But the referent, the verbiage of the referendum, if you had a thirty-five million dollar project, you, we're going to, I mean, we, we're, we're talking about doing primarily a, a science renovation at the high school and beyond that, for the most part, it's an HVAC project. But I think that the, the verbiage of the referendum is going to give you the latitude if you needed to, that if we found out that we needed to, you know, all of a sudden the roof at Havelin Middle School started leaking like a sieve and we needed to change the scope in order to include that roof, in the referendums that I've been involved with would have given us the latitude to be able to do that.
I think the, yeah.
And, and I don't, and I, and it's not, there's no deception there. It's purely the way that the process is done and, and the way that the approval is written. Because you, you know, that's, that's the way the process works. So I don't want anybody, you know, thinking that, saying that we're doing, you know, we've got to, you know, hold money back or not do it in a phased project because we don't want to commit to something that we may change our mind not to do in the future. I don't know that that's necessarily the case.
That's a good, that's a good clarification. Part, part of what we experience as a community going out for referendum is the support we get is generally from the level of specificity.
Yep.
But it's an excellent clarification.
You know, and I, and I, and I, I realize that and I know that it's more difficult when you start talking about a bigger project that may be a little more nebulous at times as to, as, you know, what the intent is and where it might go to, but.
But, but if we did the twenty-five million project, then we have more money in our capital reserve to handle a roof. So it, it's either way actually, you know.
But, but at that point, you're going back for another, you need another vote.
Correct, but if the roof is falling in, I think we can run a vote.
I hope so, I hope so. But, I mean, that, that, that's just part of the way that I look at, at a, a larger project phased. Let you, you know, you, you get your approval once and then, and move forward for multiple years. Because let's face it, we don't have any more money. We're not, it's not like if, if our goal is to balance and not go, you know, raise our debt cost. It doesn't make a big difference whether we borrow it today, you know, whether we, we approve thirty-five million today or twenty-five million today.
Except for the psychology of the number.
I agree, I just, you know, I'm just working, getting around that, that's all.
Yeah.
Can we talk a little bit about state aid for a second? I just want to have a better grasp on how that works. When you talk about the level of state aid we're going to get, right? We're talking about the future and maybe it not being as much available to us in the future, right? The longer time isn't our friend when it comes to state aid.
That's possible.
Correct? But so can we just dial it really back a little bit and explain the way state aid works for us with a capital project specifically? Because I get a little confused. I know that we're borrowing, we have to borrow some money and that's our debt service and we have our capital reserves, but define state aid specifically.
So you get, state aid works, so basically for any eligible project dollar, which hopefully is, you know, like we said, ninety-five percent of the project or more, you receive state aid back at a, at a assumed aid ratio they set. They say we assume you bond at X percent and they pay it back. But the, the key is how it flows is the earliest you can get aid is eighteen months after SED approval. And that assumes that you close out the project. So the project is completed and you send in what's called a final cost report and a certificate of substantial completion of the state. So if you don't do that for three, four years, then they say, that's fine, but we're just going to sit on the aid payments until you submit it. And then in the meantime, the debt service is running. So that's kind of the key for closing it out is to keep it in line.
So they're matching us as to a certain percentage of how much we spend? Is that, is that what that means?
Right, so they say.
So what is the rate right now? What are we, what are we looking at?
Sixty cents on a dollar.
Right, so there's.
Sixty point nine.
Yeah, I wanted to maybe explain how the state establishes the interest rate because it may not be the rate they actually get when they come.
Right, so there's a.
And that they also get building aid on principal as well as interest payments.
Right, so there's, there's kind of two factors that go into the state, state aid calculation. You can see both of them on this chart we have in the appendices. So across the top in the kind of oval bubbles, that's what's called the state assumed amortization rate. So basically the state says for every project that receives SED approval in sixteen seventeen, we're going to assume that you borrowed at two percent. They just set a rate for everybody across the state that's like an average of all what everybody bonded at. So whether you bond at one or you bond at four, they're going to pay you on an assumed debt service schedule as if you had bonded at two.
Okay.
So that's how they figure out when Tom mentions that they pay you on principal and interest. They say if you had, you know, a million dollars of project costs, so that's your principal, and then we're going to assume that you had interest cost of two percent on that and that's how they're going to pay you back. So that's how they figure out what your debt service schedule is. And then the second piece of it is your individual district's building aid ratio. So the state assumed ratio is everybody statewide, just based on what year you get approval in. The, the district's building aid ratio is specific to you. And that is in the current year sixty-one point nine percent, I think. So basically when they take that debt service schedule that they run out, that assumed schedule, they then multiply that by point six one nine and that's the aid you get back.
Point six one nine.
Right, sixty-one point nine.
So assuming a project costs a dollar.
Right.
And that includes our loans and, and everything, you know, in our, in our amortization rate and all. So assuming a project costs a dollar, we're going to pay.
Thirty-nine cents.
Forty cents and they're going to pay sixty cents on it.
And so basically the way we.
That's a simplistic way to look at it, but I'm trying to just get a full understanding of this with the state aid because we're looking at that state aid number going from sixty percent to fifty percent, right? I mean, in the future.
No.
We just don't know, but we're looking, I mean, we're thinking that that's.
We know what the trends are.
Right.
Right, I mean, well, so building aid is really an expense-driven aid. So I mean, your, your aid ratio could change because it's, it lots, you know, it changes a little bit. But if you look back, you have a history here and it really hasn't ever dipped below like fifty.
Fifty-nine, fifty-eight, three.
Oh, okay.
Percent over the last ten to fifteen years. So I mean, could they change the formula at some point?
Yes.
Sure they could, but you know, it, we can't really predict in the future something that doesn't change. So with, within the current rules, you're pretty well established between, you know, fifty-eight, fifty-nine, sixty-one, sixty-two percent. And you're actually, right now, you're eighteen nineteen, which is only an estimate right now. It's actually jumping up significantly, but we didn't use that in the report since it's kind of an anomaly that jumped up. And we've seen before where districts in the estimated ratio might jump up, but then the final figure actually comes in closer where you've, you've historically been. So for now, we're not using that to be conservative, but there is a chance you even could be jumping up.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Fifteen-year aid payback, yeah. Right, that's the other, another key thing on the aid, I guess, is that the state pays it back over fifteen years typically. If it's a, if there's additions involved and the additions, if it's like a blend of addition and renovation, but the additions is the larger component, then it's twenty years. And if it's just additions, if you build like a brand-new high school, then that would be paid back over thirty years. But traditionally, it's most projects, ninety percent of projects, ninety-five percent are fifteen-year paybacks. So then we also structure the debt for fifteen years so that you get the, you know, when you look at the maturity schedule, that local share gets relatively even. And in this case, it's not exactly even because we're filling in some drop-offs, but we try to kind of smooth that local share by keeping the bonded debt service on the same term as the aid payback.
Okay. Got a quick, quick question on some of the numbers. So go to page seven. I'm not sure if it's just a typo or if it impacts the graph. So twenty twenty-one for the building debt, it's six sixty-six, four twenty-four. Scroll forward to the next graph.
Do this one?
Yeah, it's six thousand dollars. Did you really mean to have it be six thousand or did you, should it be six, for twenty twenty-one, that blue part?
Yeah, so we, I, I think we, sorry, I probably should have hit on this again. I think we've covered it before in some of the previous iterations that we looked at in this. But we basically, back on this page here in scenario one, since this is page eight or nine, page nine. If you look in column C, we were using a little bit of debt service fund as an offset to be able to have that project slide in. Typically how we do it in most of the projects, what you've seen in some of our reports in the past is we do capitalized interest. Because basically what, what that's paying for is back to the concept of the eighteen months. When we first go out to borrow, you're going to have debt service due a year later on borrowings, but there is no aid there to offset it. So we need some kind of offset or else you wind up with a huge spike in your local share. So we typically built in capitalized interest, but that erodes how much of the authorization is available for construction. So if we set aside one point two million for capitalized interest, now that's one point two million less of construction you can do. So what we looked at as part of this project was saying, you know, the district has a little bit of money set aside in a debt service fund from interest earnings on previous projects. So we said, let's apply some of that instead of using capitalized interest so you can use all of the project costs on construction, construction incidentals. So that's, we, we just show it against the existing debt because technically legally it has to go against existing debt. You can't use it against a new project. But so, sorry for glossing over that, but that's what's going on with that.
Thank you.
So those numbers are accurate.
Okay.
I haven't gotten through all, you've gone back through, but so you're using debt service reserve in each scenario?
Yeah, the same assumption in all four.
Well, actually, it looks like there's slightly different variations and I don't know why.
It may have changed a little because as the project gets bigger, then that first impact goes up a little bit. So we need more debt service fund for, or actually maybe.
Actually use less.
Yeah, I think we're actually using less because you're above the bar. So since we're not getting back to the bar anyway, then we said, let's just kind of level it out.
Okay.
More or less.
Okay. So, so let me re-ask my question about what our.
Right, in all the scenarios, we just kind of assumed one ban into a bond, except for scenario four would be, you know, two different sets of one ban into a bond for the phasing.
Okay, so again, my question then is on reserves. I guess I needed to be more clear. So we have seven million dollars in capital reserve, but then we had, is it four million dollars?
Over four million in the debt service.
Debt service, okay.
And the capital reserve is what requires voter authorization to use that.
Right, but the debt service reserve could be used to pay off future debt for the sake of providing, allowing us to borrow money in the future.
Right, technically, it can, it can be used only against existing debt. So you can use it against.
To pay off existing debt.
To build in.
Bringing it down below the line so you can, you can borrow more to bring it up, okay. And you know, let me just say, I mean, I'm, I, I may seem like I'm advocating for a larger, it's really, I just want us to make sure that we're looking at it-
Sure.
In full scope, you know, it's, because let's face it. It's what we're doing today, do we want to, you know, it's either maybe, you know, go through the pain and, and convince everyone that we need to do it now, or we do something smaller today and in probably three years, two, three years, we're back here doing it again. And I think that that may be a little bit trickier because we're not going, this project's not going to be complete when we're starting to think about what the next project is. And, and you know, the, what's the psychological effect on people there as well? You know, for us to go back to the well for another $15 million in a few years.
But then the question is, if we don't complete this, we'll be paying off debt or paying, and we still won't have any money coming in from the state. So if it takes us three years, it's 18 months, we're paying principal-
18 months from, from the time of approval.
Okay, but if it takes us three years to complete, you're saying that for 18 months additional looking, that we're going to have to start paying principal until we start getting aid?
Well, you're not going to borrow any money, you know, it's-
We're going to borrow money to start it, right?
Yeah, but it's going to be, we're, we're a year, we're at least a year away from borrowing money.
No, I understand, but he said we don't start getting funding back until we complete the project.
Yes.
Right, and that's, you know, we have used kind of, in general, we're looking at it as like a big project, right? I mean, you can kind of parcel it down on a by-building basis and try to close out that way. But it does become a little bit harder for Jack Prevost for those kinds of things without knowing, okay, now you got to get really detailed in terms of saying, this building is going to be here and it's this amount of dollars because, you know, we're only going to borrow that amount. Because now we have to kind of stagger borrowings to match to staggered aid flow. So we've kind of looked at it on a, you know, global level to say, everything's going at once here. I mean, you, you would have some flexibility to, without maybe necessarily doing like a three-year phasing. Like maybe you could do some smaller phasing, but it, it just makes it much more complicated to manage if you go that way, so.
Yeah, if you're looking, your date on scenario one, final cost report is June of 2021. So over three years away.
Right, but I think your point was more like if you're saying, well, from when you start the construction, if you don't close out for three years, not necessarily from the vote. So in our scenario, start of construction was not until, I think, 20, like 2019. So we're kind of only look, looking at like two years essentially built in. So if, you know, if it gets out to longer than that, then that's where you see the aid in column G would start to slide out further and there would be a mismatch on the local share side.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about. The one thing I just wanted to share also, just from our perspective on, on working on so many of these, is that I think it's important to keep the message and the communication simple also, to have the best chance for success. And I'm concerned with the amount of complexity with the phased approach to this, that without the same level of conversation and interest, that not everybody's going to get that. And that could lead to you not having success. So just factor that in as well as you're, as you're continuing to think about. I think it'd be an easier conversation for people to understand if you are taking, you know, either option one or option two, knowing that you still have high priority work that has to come. And you still talk about that for sure right now, that we are going to have to come back again to finish the work that we've started. But this phased approach, to me, is, is complex. And we've had a lot of experience with complex votes, multiple propositions within a referendum. And generally, they're very hard to understand and, and I would suggest highly that you just give that strong consideration.
Okay, is there any more questions that anybody has so far? I, I would like to know the, what the consensus of the board is on whether it's a single one or a phased. I can start it off. I am in favor of a single.
A single, what level?
25.
So you're saying scenario two?
Scenario two, yeah.
And, and can we define scenario two one more time? That was all of, all of FDR Mechanicals, that was the science, that was completion of the Havlin Mechanicals, and that was all of North Park Mechanicals.
Correct.
Correct.
And science labs.
And science, yeah.
And science, did I not say that? I'm sorry.
Yep.
And I just, I want to reiterate also again, because I know how public this will get. As soon as people hear a number, they're going to latch on to that number. So it's important that we have the opportunity, you still have the opportunity-
Right.
To make your final decision on the final number, that the 25 million may not be the final number. It's a draft, but it's, should be close, but we want to be sure that everybody leaves understanding that.
Anybody else want to pipe in?
I could support that.
Perry?
Perry? I'm sure, I know you just mentioned it to get the out, but I mean, what, what you're thinking at the moment?
I'm easy.
And scenario two, if you increase the debt service amount you're putting in, would that lessen the, the tax burden? Have, has that, have you played with those numbers?
Yeah, the, I mean, if you looked at the full in scenario two, it's how-
It was four.
Because I think you're using 1.2 of debt service.
Right, we're using about 1.2. So, I mean, basically what you would be looking at, the, the tax burden is really those, you know, where you see that dash line-
Yeah, yeah.
Across the page, the three green bars that kind of peek over that would be what we were quantifying the tax burden on. So if, you know, if we added up those totals, I don't have that handy right in front of me, but if we figured out what that overage is, if you use that additional amount of debt service fund, then you could essentially have it have no tax burden, you can get back to your existing local share. Or, or as a midpoint, if you didn't use exactly that much, but if you used more than the 1.2, that would decrease the tax burden.
It looks like it's roughly 500, right? So you could, if you up that by 500, then it's no tax burden.
Right, no additional tax burden, yeah, on the current local share.
But if I'm looking at that, then no star. We're talking about $15 a year?
For a $200,000 house for three years.
Okay.
But that number is not increasing the debt service, right?
Right, the $15 is based on what's in the report.
Correct.
Based on those, couple of those three green bars that are over. So for those three years where you're over the dash line, that, those overages equate to $15 for a no-star house, $200,000 assessed value.
Right, but back to what Mike was asking, right? If we increased, if it was possible to increase-
These would go away.
Right, right.
Right, so if you, if you use additional debt service fund, then that would bring that down-
That was another 500,000, right?
Depending on what level of additional debt service.
That's what you're talking about, you want to make sure I understand it.
Absolutely, and then the, the, one of the things, one of the reasons why it's worth looking at that, and then I don't know if we can contribute fund balance at the May vote. But one of the things about looking at such a small number, maybe using more of the capital reserves for that and/or if we come back and say, it's going to be another 400,000 because we took a look at these other things. You know, to be able to say we're not increasing the debt level services is, someone said the word huge. But, and, and again, that was the premise that the district leadership team began with, was keeping the debt level service. So there is something to be said wherever you, wherever we land to say, is there a way to, to adhere to that?
Right.
Right.
And it's that psychological thing. If you, if you could go out and say, you know, it's, it's zero impact, that's much more than saying, well, it's $12, even though that's a small number. And I know you say it's three years, but I think once you raise it that $12, it's forever.
Right, whether it's-
It never comes down.
Well, it would, it would come down for, if we did raise taxes for those three years, because we would be allowed to raise it because we would have the, the exception to the tax cap. And then when we didn't have that debt service over that level, we would bring, we would bring that down. That's a good clarification, but again, maybe, maybe you should finish, Doug, where, where you were at with checking in with everybody and then, again, we, this all started with, wherever you land, we'll, we'll go back to the numbers, get real numbers and be able to present some options.
So, Mike?
I, I think I would be in favor of scenario two if we could use more debt service. So modify two to give zero impact.
I, I think there's a lot more discussion than we have to do on the actual project. But where I was trying to get to is which one, what, you know, which, which direction are, are we going in? So Steve, what do you think?
What are we getting for the, the additional 5.9 million, which is the difference between option one and option two?
You're getting the full, full heat renovation in the high school.
Okay, FDR Mechanicals, as two words, means nothing to me.
Okay.
Yeah.
Upgrading the, all the heating distribution system through-
From steam to hot water, A.
But just, just through the entire building. You'd have new, I can't say that I know the full scope, but we're looking at probably all new unit ventilators, new, new equipment in the classrooms throughout the FDR.
As opposed to the partial plan-
As opposed to just doing the science rooms.
When it was just going to be updating the mechanicals in the science areas that were getting upgraded.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so what-
We'll go back at some later day and continue to do the same work.
So what happens if we don't do it as part of this project? I mean, is there a risk of having the same problem at FDR that we had at Havlin? Where we've got heaters in the, the rooms and classes moving from room to room?
Can Elliot answer that question?
He just did.
Yes.
Yes, you can answer it, or yes, the-
Yes, it's the answer.
Yes is the answer.
The equipment is 50-plus years old. There is a risk of catastrophic failure pushing it out even further, knowing that pushing it out would be not just one year, but probably three to four years.
And the other point is that if you were to, if you pushed it out and you had a catastrophic failure, you're not going to have the luxury of doing-
Having it open and doing it.
Doing it the right way. You know, you're going to be, you're going to be scrambling to put a Band-Aid on it, which will probably be expensive. And then you're going to spend the $5 million to do it, right?
So kind of like Havlin then, and since this is the third time, we're going to finish Havlin?
Kind of like.
Well, I think a little different Havlin. I don't, you know, I think that we, probably initially, we, we did some firefighting or we, we did some Band-Aids initially, but I, we've done a, we've done a methodical approach at doing the repairs in Havlin. It's just been a matter of phasing. It has been, we've been doing it in smaller chunks and that may be confusing to people, but I think that it was methodical and I don't think that there was any-
Well, think of it as three buildings.
Yeah.
If it was done in three phases, the A wing, the B wing, the C wing, but-
Yeah. I have a question just about our debt. So obviously Bernie Donigan's, you guys deal with a lot of, you know, you, you build these graphs for a lot of school districts throughout the state. In my mind, I always think of ratios of loan to value. When you look at a school district the size of Hyde Park, looking at our debt service, how do we compare?
I mean, I, I don't have any specific numbers as far as a comparison, but I mean, in general terms, I think you're at a good level in terms of debt to, you know, the crediting agencies. When you do crediting calls, that's part of the factors that they look at.
Yep.
And I know from previous crediting calls we've done, they haven't called out debt as a concern. So on the whole, I think you're kind of, you know, relative to your overall budget, relative to your, like demographics, like your assessment values. I think, you know, you're right in line with probably many of your other peers. I mean, if you wanted specific numbers, we could go back and do a little research for you, but it certainly is not aligned with what-
So, so you know, I may be, you know, I could be lynched for this, but my, my question is, are we spending enough to maintain our buildings? You know, we're, we're, we're struggling to keep our debt service at a particular level, which is what it is today. But is that necessarily the right level? You know, we, we-
Can I rephrase your question, which I think what you're really asking? Is that, what's the debt level a community can afford? But at what point are we too, too far above that line that the community is going to say, mm-mm, not doing it?
Well, no, no, actually, I'm looking at it from the other direction. Is what, what should our, what's our debt level need to be to maintain our buildings the way that we need to maintain them?
Probably double that if you look at the building condition survey.
Yes, but you can't just do that without knowing what the communities can afford.
So then, so our challenge is to help them understand the value of doing what we're talking about doing. I mean, we, I mean, we're, we're not a, you know, we're not a small district. We're a pretty substantial district here. And we've got, we've got architects and engineers doing building condition surveys that are saying you need, this work needs to be done on our buildings. We've got 50-year-old systems and, and you know, and it's, that's not the only building we have a 50-year-old system in. And we're going to make a decision not to work on heating systems that we know are in not great shape.
But aren't we making a decision where the roofs were slated much sooner than some of these heating systems?
So we got the same issue. So my, my point is in three years, so we're, we're saying that, okay, we're, we're okay to do 25 million, but we don't want to do 33 million or 34 million. Well, you know, the day may come, we may, we may be, you know, three, three years away.
That wasn't what I'm saying. I'm saying do the one now, three years from now, let's see what, what, where we are.
I, I understand that.
And during that time, perhaps we do the study on where our debt limit is. I, I have no problem doing a study on that. I just, at the current time, if we up the debt limit, we are upping the tax.
Yep.
You know, yeah, without getting into the weeds. Yeah, yeah, and I think we're being very responsible with the information we have now. I think we're being very clear that in a couple of years, we're going to need to complete the other buildings and the roofs are going to need to be looked at. We're being very transparent about that. The board just decided this year to do a long-range financial plan. Jason is going to be joining us for that. We're going to set the date for that tonight. And I, I think that type of a conversation about our future and the future of our debt service is ripe for that, that, that conversation. But I think we have a pretty clear roadmap for at least the next two building projects. And I think, to your point earlier, there's like, oh, and now we got to explain this and go through this all over again. I think the second time will be easier. I think what was important with this project was the fact that we were, we needed for our academic program to do something that wasn't deemed anything in a building condition survey because the building condition survey doesn't touch science labs. So we really started this project knowing that we wanted to wrap our arms around something that doesn't appear in a building condition survey, but is our highest academic need. And that's to prepare our students for the sciences and the STEM and the STEAM where all the jobs are, that hopefully they'll stay and come back. And I just heard Ron Hicks today talk about the future of our area. Gave a big shout-out to the ZEE computer with IBM. So I think we're being very responsible and we've got a nice way to chunk us for this project. Our eye on the second one, we can do a long-range financial plan. Jason can include in his presentation the, looking at long-term debt service and, and what is reasonable and how do we, how do we look at debt service in the future to-
Can we phase it?
It might be some creative ways to- It might be some creative ways to, to look at future debt service and how to map it out.
I don't disagree with you in any way.
No, yeah.
But I, what I might take opposition to is looking at trying to buy down. I, I think that a modest increase is appropriate because I think that we have to go there in order to maintain our buildings. That's my opinion. That's my, that's my opinion. I think.
I think it, that's a good opinion, but I think we need to phase it slowly up.
Yeah, no.
Okay? Because it does have a tax thing, Doug.
Absolutely, absolutely. But we've got to take care of our buildings.
Yes.
All right.
So. So to answer Doug's question, I can support option two.
Okay. So are we in agreement that we can give marching orders to our architect and our bond? Oh, Jeff, we didn't ask Jeff. That's sorry, I'm sorry.
Yes, you can go. I really don't want to go back to the voters in three years and say we want to finish the heat at FDR. We've already said Havland, this is the third time. I'd like to say we get it finished. Um, yeah, but I don't think I'd agree to finish all the schools. New York State is still losing people. We don't know what it's going to be like in five years of our attendance. So we're throwing money and fixing schools. I don't want to be Arlington and have a beautiful school and not have students to go into it. So, yeah, I can finish with, I can support two.
Okay. Do you need anything else from us? I understand that, you know, we, we just haven't authorized anything. Actually, we have that resolution, we will get one up. And I think in, we still need to identify everything that is in that thing so we can go forward and, and discuss it.
Right. So to that point, just real quick, the other handout we had for you, I don't think we have it up on the screen, but we also brought a timetable of dates for you just to kind of lay out where are you going between now and a potential may vote. Um, so it's just a couple of pages document there. There's, there's a lot of steps. It's mostly, you know, more for the district administrative team in terms of, you know, publications, things like that that you have to do. But the one key step for you is a board. It's on page two, I think it might be like step 14 or something like that. There's a, a board meeting there where you're going to be adopting all your resolutions. So Seeker calling for the vote in the, in the referendum language. Um, and right in there, you know, if you're trying to vote with the May budget vote, uh, we have down at the, the March 22nd board meeting would be the latest. You could do those resolutions to meet all your required publication deadlines. So that's kind of your timeline between here and March 22nd. At some point between there, you'll have to kind of, you know, as, as Dan was mentioning and might add some comments right now, this, this was kind of an initial look at this and there'll be a little bit of refinement between now and March to come to the exact, you know, hard figures you want to take to the public. Um, and that's kind of the drop that date of when you have to make that decision.
Just real quick to what Jason's talking about related to Seeker, that's the, your environmental review. Okay? So that is a step we have to take prior to you adopting the resolution. We'll help walk you through that step. This should not be any significant environmental review. In fact, it will likely be a type two action, uh, which will not require any further action beyond that. So, but we will help you put that into place to be sure that that T is crossed and I is dotted before that happens. So, okay?
Great.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Jason, we'll get back to you with a date. Uh, thank you for the gift.
Yep.
And, uh, safe journey home, everybody. Some of you are traveling further than others, so be safe. Thank you so much. This was very helpful. I think it included all the information we needed to.
Right.
Move us, so thanks.
Thank you. Um, at this time, I'd like to suggest that we move the 7.5 learning standards and 7.6 assessment update discussions to the next board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? Hold on, favor? Yeah, hold on, favor? Thank you. I think that in the interest of time, that would be a good thing. All right. That brings us to the rollover budget. Energy, energy.
Energy.
Energy, sorry.
Talk fast, Jill.
All right.
Well, I didn't bring you a present like Jason, I'm sorry. Hey, Viva.
Oh.
We'll settle for good news.
No candy even?
No candy. But I can promise you it'll be a lot less data-heavy.
Okay.
So, and I'll make it short and painless. All right. Let's see. Oh, boy. Okay. Okay, so this report is going to be an update on the last performance year. So this will be from August 2016 through July 2017. And the reason I'm doing it so late is because normally I would report when we come back to school in September or so, um, because it takes a few months to have the data caught up and then I would be reporting on the previous year. Um, but I was out on maternity leave this fall, so it got moved up to now, but.
Then congratulations.
Thanks. Um, so just a quick timeline of, of the program, I think this will be helpful, is we started the contract in April 2013. There was a four-month period in which Synergistic helped the district, um, get information and, and find somebody and, um, gather data and stuff like that. I was hired in July 2013 and so the performance year for the program became August through July. Um, and now that, well, so the next thing is that our, our contract period ended with Synergistic in August 2017 was our last payment. So we fulfilled the four years of our obligatory contract with them. Um, and now any additional net savings from here on out belong to the district. We won't be paying them those hefty contract payments anymore. So we get to keep all our savings as opposed to giving most of it to them. However, even though the contract ended, we keep all the support from Synergistic. Um, even now, I'm, I'm working with them to help me with some of the things with the data and going forward with the controls project and everything. So their support is there even though the contract ended, which is the benefit of that working with those consultants. But what I was going to say is now that we've fulfilled our contract with them, we can, I can report to you for the once, once a year report, um, for whatever time period you want. So if we want to back it up a month so it matches up with the district's budget year, that might be more helpful to the district because it can help with, um, we use the data and the trending from this program to like forecast utilities and things like that. So that's an option. Program goals, always the first, um, most important goal is that things are working the way they should. Things are, are warm and safe and comfortable for the students when they're here. We want everybody to be happy. We don't want complaints. Um, and then to create a culture of awareness throughout the district and eliminate waste where possible, which is mostly during on our, our unoccupied times. Changes that impact the energy and our consumption are weather and temperature. Last year, the, the period I'm reporting on, 16, 17, was 8% colder than the previous year, but that's not really saying a whole lot because even though it was a little bit colder, the previous year was abnormally warm. So we didn't, we weren't using a lot of energy. So last year, we used a little bit more energy, but still not as much as on an average year. The cost of commodities impacts our use. Electric has remained stable, natural gas has risen and, um, oil has also risen a bit. Um, our, our prices for energy are not locked in. We don't have a contract with a third-party supplier, so they, they fluctuate based on our local utility, which is Central Hudson. And for, we have Bettini for oil. Our equipment mechanical changes, we're working on the controls project district-wide. That'll impact our energy use. We're now getting things working where they weren't previously, um, like at Haviland. We now have, um, heat in the A and B sections where we didn't have as much. Same with North Park and FDR. We're working on changing over all our lighting to LED and it's gradual, but it's happening and that impacts us in a great way. And any technology we have, server, stuff like that, all contributes to our energy consumption. This is a visual of our utility cost distribution for the previous year. Our total utility spending is $578,589 and this is how it's broken out by commodity. So you can see that our, our largest commodity is electric and our smallest water is sewer. But that's how it looks broken out. The life of our program, so since we started in August 2013, um, we've saved $677,503, which is at about an 18%, 18.5% savings over what we would have spent had we not had an active conservation program. And the last school year, we saved $153,376 at 21%. Our summer savings is 8,000, a little more than $8,000 at 18.5%, which is a really great, um, cost avoidance percentage for this district because we don't have air conditioning everywhere. We don't have a lot of stuff running in the summer except we have window units and things like that where we have summer school. But it's great to be able to save that much money when we're not running a whole lot of, um, equipment. Now, the little pie chart there I wanted to show you is, um, it's our utility costs and the little small triangle of purple, I can't use a laser pointer because they don't show up on these TVs, but, um, the little small purple sliv of pie is our program savings. Now, most of that piece of pie went to Synergistic over the past four years. However, that, that piece of purple now, we get to keep for the district. We're not paying the utility companies that money. We get to keep it and if we didn't have an active conservation program, that entire circle would be money that's going towards, um, all our energy consumption bills. So it's, it's a good chunk that we're, that we're not paying to the utility. This is the net savings over four years. You can see year one and two, we had some net savings. Again, the majority of that went to Synergistic. Year three, we were in the red because again, that was the super abnormally warm year that we didn't really use heating and that's where our savings comes from for the most part because we don't have AC. Um, and year four, also a little bit in the red, um, about $10,000 or so, um, because it was only a little bit warmer. We did use more though, so we were able to save a little bit more. Um, over all the four years though, um, we have a net savings that is positive and so even though Synergistic got the majority of the savings, we did, we were able to keep some. And now that additional six-figure net savings that we paid out will stay in the district and we can use that money for our schools or we can budget, you know, budget less money so we don't have to, you know, because that money will be there. The gross program savings for year four on top is, that might, um, change a little bit, which might alter the net savings because it's pending adjustments for the capital work that was done at HMS and occupancy changes for HPE over the last couple of years. The occupancy at HPE has grown. Um, and when we started this program, it, we had just emptied the building, so it just stopped being a school.
And the one thing, I don't mean to interrupt, but I'm going to interrupt. Uh, the one, the one thing is that, you know, we are, while it won't show up in an energy report, the rent that we're collecting at HPE, they, we do factor in the cost of operating the building and, you know, the heating and electric, so.
This is a slide that I wanted to show because it, it really helps you understand that our savings now, um, are forecasted to, to improve exponentially because we're not paying, um, all that money out in fees. So you can see the drop off there after the four years and how that net savings, it's a, it's a little bit and then it's going to go up a whole lot because we get to keep our own savings now. So it's, that's just forecasted, um, 10 years out from when we started and I'm not sure that that's the exact number we'll get to, but it's, that's where we're looking to go. And our, our savings are, are increasing, so.
Okay, I'm going to interrupt.
Okay.
So when I look at that, it has a trajectory, a sloping upward.
Mm-hmm.
Is that because you anticipate finding additional opportunities or is that because you're anticipating fuel cost increases?
Which color? The blue or the purple?
The, I'm colorblind, the, the larger in the back. The one in the back.
The blue, okay. That's.
I know, it keeps adding.
The projected savings, right.
But my point is it, it appears to have a curve. It's not a straight linear projection. Maybe it's, am I reading?
No, it, it looks like it's, in fact, she.
What the assumption is that.
Well, our, our commodity costs will increase, yes. That'll happen. Um, and these, I mean, these savings are going to be impacted by what we do with our buildings, um, the cost of commodities, the weather. Um, and yeah, we are going to find more opportunities. Um, we are finding more opportunities. But the, because of the way the, 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 the way they calculate the savings, um, and the math that they use, it's not, I'm trying to find a way to explain it very simply. It's a linear regression, so you're going to have a curve in it. Um, it's based on taking the, the information that we have on the buildings today and adjusting that information based on our baseline data. So it's not going to be a straight line. Um, I don't know how to better explain that.
So you, you did use the word exponential growth a minute ago, so I'm wondering why it's not linear. And I know you just explained it, but I think I missed your point.
Okay, um, I didn't literally mean exponential growth. I misspoke.
You're very literal.
I know. I just meant, I just meant it's going to grow a whole lot quickly.
All right, you know what? I, I asked the question and it's not as important as, as getting through it. My, my, my point is, there's no sign of plateau, I guess is what I'm saying.
That's correct.
Okay, good. Continue.
There will be no plateau.
Okay.
This is the good news. Um, four of our buildings this year qualified for the Energy Star certification. Um, it is, it's not an easy certification to get. Um, and the way that's done, now to further confuse the issue, the buildings aren't compared against each other like we do here. We say, you know, um, Violet Avenue's, um, building system is so old, it's only, you know, it's only a single pipe, it's all pneumatic, it's air, um, it can't set back at all. So as opposed to Havland, you know, but we're not comparing them against each other here to qualify for Energy Star. The buildings are compared against all similar buildings nationwide. So our high schools compared against high schools nationwide that are of the same size, the same type of student population, same use, um, the same equipment types, um, things like that. So in order to qualify for the Energy Star, the buildings have to perform better than 75% of all similar buildings nationwide. So Roosevelt, Netherwood, North Park and Violet Avenue qualified for Energy Star and were certified. They will receive plaques for their buildings. Um, and it's, it's something we have to apply for every year and it's something that, it's great. I mean, you see, if you ever go into, um, like Kohl's or you can hear them over the, over the PA saying, you know, this is an Energy Star certified building. It's something that, um, it's good for the community and it's good for our taxpayers and, because it means that we're saving and we're doing, we're responsible with our resources. Now, that's not to say that Havland and Ralph R. Smith are not doing very well against buildings nationwide. The problem there is that they share a meter and, uh, we have smart meters for the bill, or we have, um, meters for the buildings to separate the sub-meters, to separate the, the buildings. Energy Star, the EPA would not allow me to, um, submit our manual readings for those meters. So Mr. Shaw, your building is doing just fine. You can blame the EPA for this, but I am working on it. I am trying to allow, um, trying to get them to allow us to, to do that. So we're. So we're working on that.
Jill, before you leave this slide, I just want to publicly say thank you. Jill came into my office with the applications for Energy Star and I signed off on them before she sent them in and it was, it's a lot of work. And she didn't have to fill out these applications for this award and she did and I just want to publicly thank you because when I read through them, I realized it was, it was quite a chunk of your time.
It, it was, thank you. And it wasn't just filling out an application, not only do we have to fill out the application, we have to have a PE, a professional engineer come, take measurements of indoor air quality, of, you know, lighting levels and building use and they have to stamp off with, you know, their stamp on our applications. So it's not something that's taken lightly and it's, it's great for us, so. And we'll be applying every year.
And we don't get any financial things from the government?
No, we have to buy the plaques.
You do. You get, you get a free decal, but you have to buy the plaque.
Yeah, we have to buy the plaques, but you know what? To encourage the, to encourage good, good behavior and, and all the hard work, it's, it's worth getting the plaques to, to recognize the schools for all their efforts.
We buy them from the people that certify us?
From the EPI.
Yeah.
Environmental protection.
Don't ask what that costs.
I was afraid to ask.
You're buying something from a government agency, what?
That's why we're many issues.
Have you heard the toilet seat stories?
Yes.
Airlines.
No, no, please tell us.
Okay, and the, just thank you to everybody who supports the program, especially, I mean, we just had our winter holiday shutdown and it was, oh, this was our fifth holiday shut, winter holiday shutdown. It was the best one we've had in all four year, four and a half years. Every building had almost 100 percent of everything set back and shut down. FDR led the way and everybody followed suit and it was just, it was great to walk through the buildings and just see that, you know, everybody was so responsible when they left their spaces for the break, they shut off the power strips, they turned off everything, shades, the shades were down. And the new shades were great because they're, not only do they look nice and they're, you know, in the, all the same in the buildings, but they, you can wa, I walked through room to room and you could feel the difference. If, if there was a room that had shades left up, you could feel the difference walking from room to room. They really, they, they block heat and they, they keep the light out, so the buildings did great and everybody's on board and that's why I think we're just going to.
Can I ask a question?
Keep doing very well, yes.
On, on that, when you, power strips, I, I just switched over to smart power strips. Are you considering those? In other words, the main, my computer's plugged into the main thing and when I turn my computer off, it turns off my printer, my speakers, my, everything goes off because it all works off of that. Are you, are we considering anything like that?
They have, we, we can get them. Right now, we just have regular power strips just because of the cost. I mean, it doesn't, they're very inexpensive and because it's not hard to flip a switch.
Really cool, I had my TV on it too.
But see, our, our, our cultural awareness spreads. It goes home with you, see? We're making a difference.
With me, with my wife.
But it's, it's something we can consider and it's something we can consider building in as we go also, so, with the tech department, so.
Okay. Thanks.
Does anyone have any questions?
Anyone that needs to go home, do homework or sleep, can leave.
Thank you very much, Jill.
Thanks, Jill. I think, I think we're very good.
Thank you.
What did you say, you could do this in five minutes? Is that what you said? Before the meeting?
It's just a rollover.
It's just a rollover, right? That's right, that's what I thought. That's what I thought you said.
I can do it in less.
All right, so, so the rollover budget is just the starting point in creating our budget. In the rollover, we assume that the district will keep all programming and staff the same next year as it is right now. So therefore, we're only making a budget right now for salaries and for other known costs like benefits. So now that we have the rollover budget, we can start looking at the overall picture and over the next few weeks, we'll be looking at the budget as a whole and making adjustments based on retirements, requests from administrators, and we'll be calculating in the tax cap and, and the state aid. And also, we're now budgeting more based on what we actually expect to spend, not just what we had budgeted the year before. So also, it's just important to remember that creating the budget is more than just balancing the numbers. We always want to have a budget that preserves programs for our students. We want to have a budget that can be supported by the taxpayers, one that they can afford. So I think we've done really good since the tax cap has been implemented. We've never asked the taxpayers to go over the tax cap and that's been in effect since So in the rollover budget, we've assumed that the salaries will increase about 2.74 percent. This is pretty accurate, except for the fact that we have two units that are, that contracts are up this year, so I did have to make an assumption on what their salary increases will be. The health insurance rate increase is 9 percent. That's based on an estimate, an early estimate of eight to 10. So there are some schools right now in Dutchess County that are building in 12 percent to their budget. I think that's a little too high. We will have to adjust that number as we get more info from DHEC. I don't know if you remember, but last year, the rate increase was 15.9 percent. So even though we have an assumption of 9 percent, that's still one and a half million dollars, excuse me, just for health insurance.
Be a month, a month.
Yeah.
Is it going on its own again?
I'm sorry, oh no, I moved it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
The pension costs, the rates that are here, sorry.
You don't have to, you're going.
You push me to go too fast. The rates for the pensions are the amounts that will apply to the actual salaries. So for TRS, we're not expecting an 11 percent increase overall to the pension cost. We're assuming that the rate that we apply to salaries will be 11 percent next year as opposed to the 9.8 percent this year. And we also know that the employees' retirement system, which is the pension system for all non-certified staff, will be 14.9 percent next year. That's actually a decrease in the current rate.
To wash.
Not really. We're still, overall, we, yeah, well, over, overall, between the two pension systems, we definitely have an increase. I never really provided a lot of information in the budget presentations before about health insurance, but I really just wanted to point a few things out. We're always talking about the constraints we have with the tax cap and the fact that our health insurance is increasing the way it is just makes that tax cap a little harder to deal with. So this graph might not seem alarming, but to me, it is. In 2006, '07, the total, I don't know what that is. In 2006, '07, the total health insurance budget was 12, or was 12 percent of the overall budget and this year, it's close to 18 percent. So if we still had, if our health insurance was increasing at the same rate as the rest of our expenses, our health insurance cost would be about five million dollars lower than they are now. So that is, that's significant.
Yeah, can you get that or? Or Roger, somebody? Roger can get it?
There we go.
There we go, thanks.
And at the bottom of the slide, actually, I do want to point out, I listed the premium cost for the two different plans that we offer. This is the total cost of a plan. It's the district's share and the share that the employees or the retirees pay. Okay, and here, we're just, I'm showing the number of employees and retirees in each plan. Like I said, I just had never shared this information before, so I think it's just, it's good to keep this in mind. We have 901 employees and retirees that we cover.
So for the 485 PPO family, that's 485 times 5,000 more per family as opposed to the EPO 20.
Right. The, the cost here, the total cost.
I know.
Yeah, and that's total, that's, that's the share that they.
That's why she's showing you this.
That's the share that the retirees and the employees pay too, the overall.
Right, but there's a significant difference.
Oh, mhm. Yep, there is. The, the EPO plans are, which are the lower cost, they're about 23 percent. Well, actually, I should say the PPO plan is about 23 percent more than the EPO.
So we could offer three or fourth percent raises if they move to the EPO 20. I mean, I know, I'm throwing a number, that's just a made up number, but it seems to me when we go negotiate it, that should be a factor.
When we negotiate, that's when we talk about this. For, for budget purposes, it's the health insurance, it's a contractual obligation that we have to fulfill.
Right, of course, of course.
So we do cover 901 retirees and employees. About 58 percent are current employees, the other 42 percent are actually retirees of the district. And I think that's something that a lot of people don't realize when we, when we think of the health insurance, is that we have a, a good share of the covered people are retirees. Now, this slide just shows some of the summary detail of the rollover. And like I said before, the rollover is just the starting point. This is before we've done any work on it. Cabinet's already met three times on the budget, so the presentation for next time, we'll, we'll have different numbers. But in the rollover, it's a 3.6 percent budget to budget increase or 3.29.
Could you emphasize that that's not the tax increase?
Yeah, this isn't the tax increase. I don't have any assumptions for taxes in this presentation because we don't have that information yet. This is just the.
Budget to budget.
The expense budget compared to the next, the next year. So with the 3.29 percent increase in the rollover budget, we do have work to do on that. If you look at the last five years, we, we haven't had an increase that high.
Right.
And with the health insurance assumption at 9 percent, right, I did say that was about one and a half million dollars, just the health insurance increase is more than half of the budget to budget increases over the last few years. So it's, it's significant, it has a really big impact.
Yeah.
So this slide just shows a little more detail of the different expense categories, showing the 3.29 million in total. Again, you can see that most of the increases come from benefits. So of the 2.1 million dollar increase for employee benefits, one and a half is, is health insurance and about 500,000 is for the teachers' retirement system increases. And, and the rest is really increase in payroll taxes because we expect to pay more in salaries. Now, we are required to show the budget broken down into the admin program and, and capital costs. We normally wouldn't show this information until we have the budget set, but it isn't hard to pull it together, so I just wanted to show that even in the rollover budget, we're still under the 10 percent for the admin portion. That's a goal that we've always set for ourselves, is to stay below that number. And that just brings me to the calendar. We will have a budget presentation at every meeting between now and the budget vote on May 15th. Most of the presentations will be given by me. We do have George presenting the bus proposition on March 22nd, or I'm sorry, on March 8th. And I just want to point out too, that on April 24th, that's the night that the board has to vote on the BOSI's budget, the administrative part of the budget. Normally, every year, I just bring a few slides based on the information they give me, but we do have an opportunity to have somebody from BOSI's come to speak with us about their budget. I did talk to the business official there and we wouldn't be able to choose the date because it would depend on when they could fit it into their schedule, but if the board is interested in that, I'll ask her to find a date for us. And I'm not sure who would come either. I don't know if all of the administrators go to different schools or if, if it would be Dr. Hooley, I'm not sure.
I think it would depend on what the budget is and whether it's a big increase or, or not.
Okay, yeah.
We can wait and see.
Yeah.
We can wait and see.
Yeah, so I think we can wait on that, yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right, and again, the, the budget vote would be on May 15th. So even though this is just the, the rollover, I would be happy to talk about it some more in case of some questions.
Any questions? No, I think it's pretty self, self-acclimated already, thank you, and thank you for the health stuff. That's something to think about.
Yeah, like I said, we, we don't really, we can't make decisions about it through the budget, but it is just something to be aware of. I don't know, it just keeps going. Thank you.
Okay, we have moved the next two presentations. So at this time, may I have a motion to enter public participation, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, yeah, check, see. Any discussion on that? All in favor? Opposed, if anybody would like to address the board?
Hi, Bobby Goodman. I just wanted to say thanks as a taxpayer and a longstanding facility slash DLT about all the discussion that we're having openly about the budget and thinking about the money and what proposals we can put out there and how to explain it to everybody. So I really appreciate that. Thanks.
Thank you, Bobby. Anybody else like to address the board? Okay, I have a motion to exit public participation, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Do we have any subcommittee reports to?
I can report that the Dutchess County School Board Association held their legislative breakfast this past Saturday, of which we had representation from each of the Senate and Assembly offices. In person only was DeeDee Barrett. All other offices sent representative, but, but they were engaged. It was, we had a series of presentations. For the most part, it, it wasn't a dialogue as much as it was members of the School Board Association providing information as to what impacts school districts locally and what relief. And in many cases, there were multiple existing bills that are in various stages going through the process that we would like to see endorsed. Fairly well attended. I think we had about 35 people in the audience and that was school board members, superintendents, business officials. So given that this is the first time we've done it in many, many years, I would say it was a huge success. You know, it would have been nicer to have seen more of the legislators in, in person, but, you know, they were, their representatives, the people that were there, were engaging. They asked quite, you know, there were some questions and, you know, and they paid attention and, and one of the big parts was we wanted to get it across that we want them to look at us as a resource when they've got questions about education in New York State, that this is a group that they can come to for, for input, so.
Okay. Was there any discussion on the many vetoes by the governor on different educational bills?
It was, it was mentioned. I mean, it was, it was brought up about the various, you know, as people were making presentations and they were identifying bills that, that had been through and passed both Senate and Assembly, only to be vetoed by the governor. I mean, there was a bit of a theme there, but I, I won't say that we dwelled on that as a.
Okay, I, I'm just curious that they mentioned it even, no?
Yep.
All right, thanks. All right, thanks.
It was recognized, yep.
Any other subcommittees? No, I don't think so. All right, great, moving on. I don't think we need any other board discussion unless anybody has something they want to bring up. Okay. Can I have a motion for the consent agenda, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion there? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Get down to the next. I have a motion for special education placements, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that, Dan?
I've reviewed the pack and recommend this adoption as presented.
Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Can I have a motion for the transportation bid award for the ambulate?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? You all understand that? All right, all in favor? Opposed? Thank you. I have a motion for the agreement with the internal auditor, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that one? All in favor? All right, bring this back. I have a motion to re-enter public participation, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that one? All in favor? Opposed? Second chance? Would anybody like to address the board? You never know. May I have a motion to close public participation, please?
So moved.
Second.
Mike and Perry?
Perry?
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. There are no other matters being necessary, there is no need for another executive session. May I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that one? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you very much. Meeting is now adjourned.